Council City of Port Island, Louisiana, date is Wednesday, January 12th, 2022, 5:35 PM. City Council change to 14:04, Port Island City Hall. Each person on the side before any chamber which agenda they wish to speak. If they are not seated in the chambers when agenda is heard, they will be notified by an officer to enter council chambers to address the agenda. Agenda please. Silence all electronic devices. Agenda one, call to order. Agenda two, stand for the pledge. Let's go, change. Police and pledge. Our chief, police and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the oath of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda three, broken?
Okay, we need to try.
Oh, request present?
Yeah, you're gonna press your present button?
You got to put it up. It's not on.
Did y'all press already?
No, it's not on. Nah, there we go. Oh, wait, took it off.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Agenda nine and four, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 8th, 2021. We got a motion by Councilwoman Lacy, second by Councilman Revere.
You got to use your machine.
Okay, we're going to get you to use your machines again. Go try this again.
Well, I already made a motion.
So you're gonna do, you're gonna do a motion or you have to touch it?
The motion is already, oh, you had already done a motion on your machine?
You, Reverend, give us a second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Gordon, and second by Councilman Revere. Any objections? You hear none?
Y'all vote?
No, present.
Sorry?
Oh, Sean, present. I present, present. I thought that was my.
Okay, hold on.
Yeah, my screen is one of them.
Is yours, your screen is up?
Yeah.
As well as that.
Mine still.
As you're done.
It just say present for me to indicate from present.
I'm not getting. It's back up now? Okay, so I got, okay, I'm sorry, I canceled the motion.
Hey, well, just so you, whatever's up there, we'll receive.
Yes, we're choosing.
Y'all see the agenda?
Y'all see the agenda?
We don't have it on our screen. No, we just have present.
We'll have the agenda on that screen.
So you're gonna press viewing only mode?
No, you should be able to vote on the agenda. We're gonna take all night though? No, sir, no ma'am. We could, we could, we could do.
All right, now it's back on the agenda.
All right, were y'all able to vote?
No.
They lost out. You know, so they just, they just lost in his present.
Okay, so we got him in his present, right?
Right, so we raised the motion by the school and the second by the.
Okay. But I, I don't, I can't get the motion to vote.
They all have it on their school. We raise your motion, it's going at the top right.
There's nothing on their mind. You want to do it again?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
There you go.
Is it up?
Yeah.
Okay, so our votes, are you able to vote?
No. Had to press the vote, let's vote.
Is it showing?
I don't see it.
Yeah, that's the motion you see.
We can take them off. Oh, that's, okay. Okay, we won't take all night. Okay, non-stop recording.
Derek said, please indicate the present. I said, go ahead and press, you can try.
Okay, let's try what voting is, is your present, okay? Okay, I have Mr. Hubble and Ms. Gordon to vote it.
You do?
Mr. Revere?
Yeah, but she said we don't give it in his present.
Yeah, Ms. Lacy? Mr. Brown?
Are we supposed to shove on my screen?
We get you up? Okay.
All right, we just go ahead.
We'll go ahead to the venue because we went through all this this morning and it's not. Again, I think I can do it now.
All right, agenda five, public comments. Comments from the public go aloud in accordance with the recent high statue project goal of section two to thirty-four. The specific agreement is still agenda item to be considered during the meeting. Three minutes per person and fifteen minutes per topic. Agenda six, consider PEC recommendation to award Phase Ten road rehabilitation project to lower bid M-Track LLC in amount of $330,000, $330,258.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I believe, Ms. Chelsea presented this to y'all last time, last meeting. Essentially, y'all took bids on the, I guess, the latest road program, Route Ten. The low bid was submitted by M-Track LLC in that amount, the $330,258, and it's within your budget, within the estimate, and we recommend a war.
Got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilwoman Lacy. Any objections? You hear none?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Good afternoon.
Pushing it, second.
Agenda seven, consider approval of the final plaque of the King Fisher subdivision previously considered for approval of the preliminary plaque.
Okay, good evening. This particular item was presented last year in the property with initially dissolved in commercial residential. And then Reese presented for the preliminary plaque of the lots just been added subdivision. The developers here now are asking for final approval. There were some changes made to right ways that we needed to ensure we had access to sewer system, so we, out of abundance of caution, we brought back each of y'all to reapprove the final plaque with the right way added. But the lot configuration is the same as we previously approved last year. So if you have any questions with the front office, the developer is present to address them.
Yes, come forward.
Hey, how y'all doing? Francois Belonge with F A Investments, developing on Stone Point Town Street. As Lance mentioned, in coordination with PEC, Port Island, we made some modifications for some right away to do sewer maintenance and stuff in the event something happens in the future. So we gave some right away, lot configurations, no, no variances requested, all the widths sort of still the same depth. We had plenty, there were big blocks, so we had one for them, except how to make that right away requested. So we just went ahead and made that change, but I just want to get y'all, get that in front of y'all, that way it's not fast without notice.
How many lots is that?
It goes twenty-four. Lot quantity stayed the same.
Move, say. Got a motion by Council, Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Brown. Any objections? You hear none?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Agenda eight, Police Department requires to hire two officers, namely Arthur Floe Jr., post-certified officer, step one twelve, grade eight, and David Greasey, post-police officer training, step one ten, grade eight. She gets it.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Last week, I presented two applicants that I wanted to set for hiring. Like I said, both applicants had a great interview. They referenced, checked out good, background good. They checked all the boxes off that I think will be a fine addition to the, to the department and foundation I'm trying to lie. Like I said, Mr. Flot, he's going to be post-certified officer, coming in with experience in law enforcement. Mr. Greasey, he'll be, like I said, he'll be placed for the FTO officer, which he was registered to go to Carter, and maybe in April, in April, middle of April. And, and once he gets out of Carter, then he'll, he'll be, like I said, he hit the ground running. And I have Mr. Flot here, I have both, both applicants are supposed to be here. Mr. Greasey, he called, well, I called him, he's quarantined, but I do have Mr. Flot here, if y'all have any questions to ask him.
Mayor, my name is Arthur Flot. Current husband, father, attempting unemployment with the city of Port Island. Reference to several friends that's affiliated with, not only the agency, but nearby agencies that spoke highly of this department. I'm just highly interested in doing, I've been doing it a little over nineteen years. Have multiple certifications from FTO training to crisis intervention, dealing with mentally ill help. Done active shooters, I did mounted patrol, I have multiple certification for post academies. Also started prior in 2005 with Lambeth, Mississippi Police Department. I attended the university where I stayed six months on our campus for duration of training. Last training was 2008 with St. Charles Parish, Louisiana. Last department, as of November third, was St. James Parish Sheriff's Office.
You kind of highly qualified.
I would like to think so. I mean, like I stated, to walk in my shoes and see and hear things that transpire and I've, I've been made offers prior leaving the department, but you look at it and you see the morale within the department, and till this day, you still hear so much that's going on. And I kind of turned down offers and chose to resign and try to get my head together and make a decision on if I wanted to continue on pursuit of this career or option out with a job offer with Ashna, which waking up every morning is not the same feeling to go sit down in the hospital and drink coffee and mandate mask being worn by the public. So I mean, it's my passion for it. If given an opportunity, not only to you, Mayor, the chief, extending an opportunity to interview and you, Council, if given an opportunity, my dedication to this department and community would be absolute.
I appreciate that.
That's very impressive.
Ma'am.
That's what we're looking for.
Well, trust me, you, I, I can guarantee under laws, I own the two shoes, two shoes I walk on, that you'll hear highly about me. I, I don't harass anybody. I believe in calls for service and, like I said, we only have one life.
Some of us that told y'all gonna ask that question.
No, ma'am, no, I just know, I just know how to deal with the community. If anybody's to walk and tell the truth about my conduct, meaning from administration on up or down below, they know how I handle myself. I don't believe in just coming to work to harass people or to avoid areas of high problems like thefts and domestics or anything in that nature. I believe in being in areas and being seen and stop talking to people.
But you saying the right thing you want to hear, so we made sure that we keep you up to, okay?
I hope I get an opportunity. I won't let any of you down. And I appreciate, Mr. Revere, he actually came and spoke to me initially when I was seated in a room, so. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but.
I thought you was attorney. I looked at you, I thought you was somebody that attorney.
No, no, ma'am, no, just who I am.
What you saying was to St. James, that was your last place of employment?
Ma'am, yes, ma'am, and I mean, I, I have, I keep everything records. I pay attention to detail with things, but I mean, just in reference to the email, getting back to keeping records, I have emails to text message from shift that shows why they appreciate me and tell me it would, they would take, they would, they can't afford to lose me, but I mean, trust me, the things that I endured or seen and the drop off in employment, you know, I mean, you notice they, they know it was a cut in losing me, you know what I mean? There were some other guys prior me leaving that kind of took a toll on me, you know, when you have so many people that's built for this and not just wearing a uniform pretending to be something in my, you know, that takes a toll. Just, I, I considered an offer, I was offered a job with, it was an ex, I want to see, he was, what was he? He was a previous, I want to see, not fire marshal, what is it? What department? No, he was a, he was one of those big timers with one of the, not FBI, but who was it?
CSI?
No, no. He was, he was, he was.
He should have been one of them agencies though.
He was a marshal or something in that nature. He spoke with me on several meetings, knowing my uncle and them that worked for New Orleans Police. Me and my family actually purchased a home right at Burnside, right by the inside of La Hope, it's the newest subdivision, and he seen me around and made me a job offer. I mean, excellent people. To do this for so many years and not have a fear in my bone, I mean, this is something I want to wake up and continue to do. I just want to hopefully find a ground in a family that I'm looking for, that the chief presented during the interview. I mean, he's humble person, I mean, came straight forward, he didn't cut no corners, and I told him straight what I'm looking for. You know, I, I do have a friend that's in the department currently, and he speaks highly about not only the employees, but also the community, you know? But I mean, trust me, I'm built on a whole different level, on a whole different level.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, good to go.
One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
When it comes to the youth?
Yes, ma'am.
In working with the youth in, in, in your past experiences, where do you see, what's your greatest attribute in those areas?
Communication. I mean, directly, that's all they want, attention. Trust me, it's, it's attention, not just from the fall. Anybody that shows a caring heart, they'll open up to you. It may take time, I mean, that's our problem right now in this generation, is mainly the youth, but they just like us, a human being, just speaking to them. I'm not the biggest man in the world, but trust me, I can handle myself and I know how to handle with the youth. You know, I've never directly dealt with juvenile detectives, but I've dealt with juveniles on a general basis, going to certain homes. I mean, if you don't have a heart to enter homes and see the condition sometimes and not care, you're not built for the job. You know, you gotta have some type of compassion to look into it and see where hurt may be coming from. It could be the foundation that they live in. Sir. Ma'am. Chief?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have to make two motions or do we do them both?
You could do one motion for both.
I move.
I second.
That's true, both honors. Say both honors.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilwoman Gordon. Any objections? You hear none?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Better than one.
Appreciate you coming forward.
Council?
Thank you.
Agenda nine, consider approving of the hiring of Mr. Darius West in the water and gas department as utility operator at Step and Grade 109A. And Council, this is a young man that we interviewed a couple weeks ago, and out of the three applicants, he was chosen as the first to put that position.
He's a native of Port Island?
Yes, he is.
Due to explaining, because I had a question about, about Mr. West was, throughout cement work, and that was his son, and I just want to make sure that we not detected violation, so if Mr. Edward was going to explain to us.
So, so yeah, a couple council members did ask, due to the fact that the father is a third party contractor for the city, does that present any type of concerns about hiring the close family member? I did have a call in to informally check with Ethics Board attorneys, they'll, they'll sometimes give you some informal advice ahead of time. I was not able to get in touch with them, but from looking through the ethics code, I, I did not see where this would run afoul of any provision, as long as Mr., the, the son, when he gets into a city position, as long as he has no type of, you know, oversight or administrative control or, you know, approval or rejection of the work that's being performed by the father's company, then, then, you know, that would be an issue, but it looks like they're in completely different departments and, and he's a, a trainee. So, you know, it doesn't seem like that, that's, that's going to be an issue there, you know, if he was being hired as head of administration or something, then it probably would not work, but I, I did not see anything, so I, I think it's good to go.
Yeah, I move. I got a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Revere. Any objections? You hear none?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Agenda ten, consider approving of the hiring of Mr. Jacoby Thomas at a fourth round rate of one in roads and drainage department at a rate of $12.28 per hour. The salary for Mr. Thomas will be reimbursed through the gold jobs program at no cost to the city. Mr. Rocha, you want to expound?
The gold jobs program, of course, we talked about it earlier, and I put the information in your packets today. They actually vetted him, and the information is with him. We're still waiting on, I think, a background check and the drug test to come back before he starts, but everything else that they vetted through his application, then they sent, and turn sent him to us. He filled out an application with us and went through the interview process, and that's what we are trying to recommend. And of course, you go with gold jobs, we train the young people, we train the persons to work, and we don't have to hire them after the end of the period in which they pay for their employment. So they're going to reimburse us for their employment with us, but we're under no obligation. for their employment with us, but we're under no obligation to continue their employment uh, once that time period is up, so.
What, what is it, six months or a year?
Well, if it's, if it's part-time, then it's a year. If it's full-time, it's six months.
Rogan was saying part-time, that means it's a twenty-eight hour week or thirty-five hour week? Or is there a cap on how many hours he can work?
It's twenty-eight hours, maximum thirty.
Maximum thirty, okay. For a year.
Well, this young man, if you do part-time, you could do a year. If you do full-time, it's six months. And of course, this young man is right out of high school and he really is looking for a skill. They already vetted him and they referred him to us.
I move.
Second. I got a motion by councilman Rivera, second by councilman Brown, any objections? You hear none?
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Lacy.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Most of the pass.
Thank you. General eleven, consider authorizing Mary to advertise for a position of assistant chief, financial officer. Counsel, as I uh, emailed you earlier to speak, uh, this person who had that position, we're turning out a reservation uh, Monday and we will advertise for that position. I move. Got a motion by councilman Brown. I have a second.
I'm the last second.
I have a second by councilwoman Lacy. Any objections? You hear none?
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
No.
Ms. Lacy.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
No.
Okay, the motion passes.
General twelve, consider grade increase for these individuals recognized as employees of the year for twenty twenty-one. Naming Teresee Patan, HR Director Payroll, step one seventeen, grade C. One seventeen, grade D. Karen Deloche, Administrative Coordinator slash Secretary, step one eleven G to step one eleven, grade H. Aaron Landry, Water and Gas Supervisor, step one fourteen, grade U to one, step one fourteen, grade B. Jennifer Avant, Police Administrative Coordinator, step one eleven, grade F to step one eleven, grade G. Michael Butler, Rosen Drainage, step one oh eight, grade C to step one oh eight, grade D. Teresa Pearson, DBW Administrative Coordinator, step one eleven, grade D to step one eleven, grade E. Phil Moore Bradford Jr., Treatment Supervisor, step one fourteen, grade K, step one fourteen, grade L. Darren Lewis, Maintenance Supervisor, step one twelve, grade D to step one twelve, grade E. Adrian Daygum, Leader of Step one oh seven, grade C to step one oh seven, grade D. Karrick Tillman, Employee of the Year, step one oh nine, grade F to step one oh nine, grade H. And and council, as I mentioned to, and Yaww, the presentation of these awards, these are individuals who throughout the year, uh, the fiscal year, which is July first of last year to uh, June thirtieth of this year, who perform above and beyond uh, their required uh, positions of our job description. And at this particular sign, I recognize them as individuals for these awards. And this is what we do each and every year of the interview.
Uh, ma'am, I I just want to make a question. I know we got like the step one, one seven to grade C. I don't know what that means about the amount of the raise that they getting from one step to the next step. Instead, you know, cause I don't know what one, one seven D means or does that mean two percent or three percent or how much percent are they getting or what?
Each get a two percent, each step is a two percent.
Okay, now let me ask this question here. Each step is a two percent and you saying two percent across the board, so that mean they would get four percent? With that two and this two that we would give them across the board?
That's what we're moving at, two percent.
Definitely.
Well, you're talking about something else that gonna happen beyond this. Uh, what they gonna get is their raise. Now, if you give across the board raise, they're gonna get additional.
Okay, so we can't give our workers three percent, but we can get, you said four percent, but we can't find money for the three percent, but we can find money extra for the four percent?
What you said four percent?
Because if they getting two now, they gonna get another two, so that's four percent, right?
Our thirty or four.
But this year, but this year.
Right, but I'm just saying.
You're just voting our twelve right now.
You know, I'm just asking a question. I don't, I don't understand all this one, two, the D step there because.
Well, you first gotta, yeah, that's what you gotta understand though.
Right.
Each step and grade, each increase, each increase is a two percent increase, but this is they just do, right here, it's two percent. Whatever else is, was agreed upon, but this, this step increase and the grade increase, that is based on the yearly uh, recognition. And that's just, that's the system that's in place.
So, we award three percent to the workers and they get three percent too. So, Evans, I remember you were saying that the high, high-paid employee can get two and we can give the others three. Did you find any information out on that?
We, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
Now, I need to ask before I make a decision here.
Yeah, we get that and we go to the next one. We just had this.
Okay, well, let's do that then. Cause I'm just trying to get answers so I know how to do some twang.
So I'm moving on twelve.
I second.
Okay, I got a, I got a motion by councilman Brown, second by councilwoman Lacy, any objections? You hear none?
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
No.
Ms. Lacy.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
I'll make a statement. Um, you know, I communicated with the mayor my thoughts on this. This is, it's nothing personal, this, this is gonna be a no vote. I just, you know, I hadn't, I don't know, I just, it just seems like this is a way to create some ill will amongst the employees if they have the same, like, re- repeat uh, recognition raise recipients. So, and for that reason, I'm, I'm voting no on that.
Well, in effect, I could just, I I could just stop that. It just, it's, it's no more people that's in that department. Then it's not just cycle around. That's just, I mean, one year this person get it and this year, that's, I mean, that's like the hell you might do, just to cycle around.
What about departments like in the Rosen Drainage? Do they have fifteen or twenty of them? They gotta wait once every fifteen years where, you know, I, and that, that just might, it just doesn't seem fair.
I know, I think what you're trying to say is more people from Rosen Drainage to be, um, I'm sorry, I appreciate that also.
Well, also I want you to remember too, Mr. Rivera, that's why I implemented the five-year automatic two percent. No, it's not long, you. After five years, ten years, fifteen years, an employee automatically get a two percent raise. That way you're not overlooked if you don't get this recognition.
I absolutely agree with that.
So, they're not overlooked and and they will get an increase regardless of what, but what they have to see is that, you know, look at the ones that got it and see what they're doing above and beyond, because that's the thing with these raises. These are peak individuals go above and beyond with their.
Just what they supervise them, uh, turn any name, or you repeat yourself?
It's go through the supervisor. And, cause it's, it's, it's that performance evaluation.
Well.
So, in, in, in my, I just want to make sure I understand this. A no vote means what? That you don't agree that they should get this? You gotta make that clear for me, because these the same people.
I don't agree with the policy as a whole.
Has this not been the same policy that's been in place though, for?
Before I got here, I'm not mistaken.
No. It, it's been, it's been in place since uh, I think Mayor Lee.
I saw it.
Yeah.
I mean, all through the year, we say, oh, thank y'all, y'all done such a good job. Y'all keep the city beautiful. Y'all did, y'all did. But then now when it come to the time to recognize them and give them, they just do. I don't understand the no vote.
Well.
Well, these are, what, what you have here is when you, you have just a list.
Yeah, we could be biased, but.
I see six guys out here. I have six, there's six guys sitting out here. And that's only part of it. You only seeing one list now. I'm gonna be, let me, let me tell everybody something, you know, it's fine. I look at these guys and say, hey, we're gonna give you a raise, that's great. And everybody needs one. Everybody likes more money. I like money, okay. Now, last year, we gave a three percent raise, which is eighty-three thousand dollars. This year, if you approved the two thousand, two percent, you had sixty-three thousand. The figures that I got from these, from number twelve, was thirteen thousand. Now, that's just these, and I call them December gifts. That's not going back consecutive year. You're looking at a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars and some change. That doesn't occur one time, it's every year. So, as you keep adding this, you're bloating the payroll. You can easily get up to a quarter of a million dollars. Now, on the flip side of that, you have, did our population grow? No, it did not grow.
What they gonna do, they party rights and China?
Would you listen? I haven't. So, you're gonna get a smaller bit of the parish pack. Okay, so how are you gonna make that up when you add that to this too? I'm just saying, you gotta look at some money here.
And we get that and of course you grown, I mean, we, we have growth in play, so I get that, but we on number thirteen, that vote pack, number twelve pack?
We ain't voting on twelve.
Yeah, you're voting on twelve, it's so far, it was three to.
Yes.
All right, we got a comment? So, ninety hours on T off on thirteen.
And we just approved a, a small subdivision just now, that's growth.
All right, we gonna, we gonna continue. General thirteen, consider man these requests for a two percent across the board salary increase for all city employees. And council, that's, is, you know, something that the, uh, employees, you know, work toward. Uh, during that, yeah, we did give a three percent last year, but then again, you know, we went through COVID. Uh, we do have uh, some of the A, A R P money. Uh, I think two percent is not a whole lot, but it's a, it's a step.
Inflation, six percent.
I, I say this during three, three to four.
I, my thought is three or four. I just, I don't know where the council's gonna fall on that, but inflation is out, it's going great. Yeah. So, it doesn't seem to be anything slowing down. So, that means our employers are, you know, so.
But just what I want to ask Evans, like I asked in the last meeting, when we saying, when we give the higher increase of the pay raise, the ones that making the money, the most money, they, they benefit with the increase. So, I asked, can we give them less two percent and give the low-income workers, well, not low-income, but low-paid workers, three percent? Can we divide it like that?
You, you, I, I, I didn't find any prohibition, you know, cause it, it's not like you're paying people based on some kind of discriminatory practice. You're not saying, I'm, I'm paying women more, men less, or anything like that. You know, you, it's, it's neutral. It's a, it's a economic-based um, class that you're creating, if anything else. Uh, for example, it would be no different than if the council voted to just say, instead of doing percentages, two percent for this group, three percent for this group, four percent for this group. It'd be no different than if you just said, we're gonna do a, every employee gets a two thousand dollar raise. You know, if you did that, the people who are making, you know, let's say, some, somebody making thirty thousand dollars, that two percent is a four larger percentage increase than what that same two, two thousand dollars would be for somebody making sixty or seventy thousand dollars. And there'd be no prohibition against that. So, uh, you know, probably the easiest thing to do is just to, you know, try, pick maybe a number that you'd be comfortable with per employee. And by doing it that way, you know, that kind of solves your concern, that whatever that number is, it's always gonna be a higher percentage for those on the lower end of the salary range than it would be for somebody on the higher end of the salary range.
You say per employee?
A certain dollar. A certain dollar amount. Like, let's say, you know, you could say, I'm just throwing out numbers here, I've not seen your books at all or anything, but like, a thousand dollar rate, every employee gets a thousand dollar raise. What I'm getting at, that thousand dollars for somebody making thirty percent, I mean, thirty thousand dollars, it's a lot higher percent than for somebody who's making seventy thousand dollars. That one thousand dollars is a, is a smaller percent. So, that basically has the effect of doing what, what you're asking for, where, you know, from a practical standpoint, your, your lower wage employees are essentially getting a higher percentage raise than what your higher employees would be getting. But I, I think you could also try to figure out some kind of silos as well and say, people, and, and do it on a percentage and say, you know, people earning this salary range gets a X amount of percent, this, this salary range gets another higher percent or lower percentage, and so on. But then you gotta figure out, you know, where are you grouping those different percentages at, you know? Who's getting two percent? Who's getting three percent? Who's getting four percent or, or so on?
And that's, and that's the thing, we don't have anything in place that help identify that. Um, I feel like that we probably need to create, we, we, back, I mean, systems, we need to create some, some type of classification system that we could be able to disperse pay raises as they should. Because I believe that the lower paying, the, who make lower salaries, that they should get a, a good percentage versus some of the higher paying, maybe it's just not their time right now. But still, how do we, how do we identify that? When, when it's really nothing, nothing there? And it's, then, then that's like you'll get into a place where, you know, some discrimination may go, you know, we have to look at that. So, really, it's just whatever that we give, it's gonna be across the board until we put something in place. And that's, and even based on certain factors like experience. We have to put, you know, um, different classifications, we have to put some type of matrix, some in place to be able to dis- to disperse raises, pay raises or pay increase. We, we must. If not, then it just will be just across the board. And I think Mayor last talked about reclassification, like for the labors. Like, um, maybe they starting paid. You know, we, we, we have to create some type of system here that could, that could continue throughout the years, instead of us just throwing out numbers and, you know? What the basis, what the pay raises are based on? Is it performance? Is it experience? Is it, uh, you know, classifications? We have to create a system, put something in place that makes sense, if you will.
And I just want to ask this question here, and maybe this might help me determine what I want to present to the increased rates. Are our city employees as essential worker or non-essential workers?
Well, pandemic caused what they were.
I was like, what?
It depends on what department you're talking about.
I mean, is, any, what department is it?
Uh, Rosen Drainage, they're all central. Water and Gas is central, uh, Sewer is central.
Okay, do they, do they get paid for? Do they get paid for, you know, being essential work? Do they get paid extra?
No.
No.
No, it's just, it just, and if, if a event occurs, you are to be on call at, at that particular time.
So, why they don't get paid extra if they're essential workers?
That's uh.
They would, you talking about overtime or things like that?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, they get overtime.
Yeah, they would get overtime.
Getting paid extra for.
Do they have essential pay money somewhere?
That's what I'm saying, do they get paid for essential pay? I know they was paying workers that was essential workers, so I was asking, did we pay our workers?
Yeah, we, we only get paid, those, those.
Do we get some kind of funds for that?
The, the only, I mean, you can't donate funds, it has to be fund, some type of. Work to do, but the only ones that do get, uh, extra pay are those that on call, and that do get a, a on call.
So, if the whole department come out, everybody get paid?
Yeah, everybody get overtime, yeah, for that again.
Evan, Evan, if you, if you get a fixed rate, rate, how would that correlate with the step grades?
I, I'm gonna defer to the accountant.
But you, you just have to move them, a one twelve A.
Maybe you just, you're right, yeah, maybe, maybe if, if let's say it's a thousand dollar across-the-board raise, you just put. Every single number on your pay salary, just bump every number up by one thousand, and that's how you account for it, I, I, I'm not sure, that, that's more of a.
We don't have that many, uh, workers for the city where we can't get.
Well, it, 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 it's knocking up in every single number, so like for every salary scale, you know, you have your grades. And then you have all these different numbers that go out horizontally, so all those numbers would essentially be just, I guess, bumped up. But, yeah, that, that would be a, a, a lantern on this McCain.
The risk reward of a step grade system is that a certain amount is not gonna correlate to the stepping grade chart. So, if you wanna give everybody a thousand dollars, that could be a thousand and a dollar for somebody, or a thousand, or nine ninety-nine for another person. Just based on how those two percent steps raised or increase based on where a person already is. So, you can find a number that accomplishes, accomplishes your goal, it just may not be that exact thousand dollars. It may be a thousand one here, a thousand two there, or so on, so forth, so ultimately, it comes down to whether you have the money budgeted to pay what you wanna pay. Does that answer the question sufficiently? Because what I suggested to this lady, when she inquired about this, is that. Me and I discussed during the total compensation reevaluation, but I started in the midst of COVID. Not knowing how that was gonna affect our sales type revenues, we decided to hold off and get a. Better understanding of where we would be, uh, further along into this pandemic, so. Uh, we're gonna do that, we're probably gonna engage an HR consultant to assist in that process. I did receive an email this week from another C A O in the state who's in the midst of a, a similar study. And they are asking for people to submit documents that they may have, uh, generated in the last few years to do the same, so. It, it, it's a, it's an issue that's, uh, I guess, um, a hot button issue around the state at this point in time. Uh, that said, the easiest way to address this when you have a stepping grade system is to. Authorize the across-the-board raise at the particular percentage you want to, and then you reclassify. Those positions that you feel are paying less than what you think they should earn. Therefore, you don't create any situation where there is a, uh, perceived discriminatory effect. Because across the board, everybody gets the same percentage. But there's nothing stopping you from after doing that, going and reclassifying certain positions, and just increasing those positions. If you do it that way, there are no ramifications going forward. But if you do it the way that you, 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 the other way you're suggesting, here's the thing, there's nothing that stops anybody from making an issue out of it. Doesn't mean they're gonna be successful, but you still may have to spend some money to defend it, if it comes out, because enough, you can't stop somebody from suing you. Anybody who has a filing fee, and the way I would thought, they go to the courthouse and file a lawsuit if I won't. So, I would suggest that you come up with a figure that you are satisfied with across the board, and then reclassify. Those positions that you wanna see up. For instance, if you look at the documents, so the information presented, I think you have. Some roads and drains people that are at one oh eight. Uh, step C, but they've been there several years, whereas you have two police officers who are presented. As a trainee at one ten. Not trying to compare the jobs at all, but my point is that the numbers tell you where you are on the spectrum, so.
Uh, you say the numbers will tell you?
Yeah, one oh nine is, one oh eight is less than one ten, period.
I mean, they have something to look at, the base that I put up.
I, I understand that, but all I'm telling you is, it gives you an idea of. The fact that this job pays two step grades lower than that job, and that person has been here over ten years. That guy's coming in the door.
Right, cause he got some now, that, and then two years, making more than one hundred and seven years, and how is that possible if they got the grade step and stuff?
That's not what I said.
I'm just asking a question though.
Well, to, to answer your question, is there are certain performance targets. That allow a person to receive increased pay, now, that is a system that was already in place. So, if your job falls into a category that involves a certification. Then you get a step increase when you achieve each level of that step certification, higher than where you are. I'm sorry.
Credentials, if they come in with credentials, would that give more pay?
That, that comes, that depends on the man, the man makes that decision, now.
Well, you see, I perfectly understand that, just because the time you've been here, that doesn't, that doesn't just say that. You have done the essential for, to, for your job, like you, that don't mean you have done certifications, training. The necessary things you need to do to move up, to get the pay increase, so years doesn't always.
Time, time and time.
I mean, that, no, I wouldn't say that.
Time and experience are not the same, you can be somewhere, you can be somewhere for ten years. But not have achieved any experience beyond what you came through the door. Right? Based on certifications and trainings and whatever you are afforded to participate in. Employees are all given the same equal opportunity. To go to training, to work their way up, and to reap the rewards that are associated with those performance enhancements, but. That's on them, they have to put in the work, put in the time, and achieve it.
So, everybody, everyone that works for the city in those areas are afforded the same opportunity.
If you are, if you are in a position that, that involves a certification, which currently for us is water and gas. And wastewater treatment, those are the certified operators that are required by the state, okay? So, if you come in without a certification, you are hired as a trainee. And you are expected to achieve level one or class one within, uh, eighteen months to two years. And that's because you can't just go take the test, you have to have a certain number of years of experience along with passing the test. So, someone could go in and pass the last, the class three test tomorrow, because they don't have six years of, of, of experience. Or college credit to offset that, those, that those years of experience, they still can't get a class three certification. So, it's a combination of time and performance on the testing. So, if you come into that position, the classes are offered periodically throughout the years, at different locations, sometimes the testing. Is the same week of the class, sometimes the testing, uh, weeks later, COVID has severely impacted the scheduling. Of the test versus the class, but those classes are still being held, and the test is still being held, so. All you have to do is request attendance, and the only time that there's an issue is if you've been several times before. So, then that, the man makes that final call, everything that happens in the city falls into the man ultimately. But it's based on recommendations from performance and supervisors, recommendation of what they observed and what they see, so. It's, it's no different than any other system, now, that doesn't mean the whole system doesn't need to be reevaluated. I'm not sure when this particular stepping grade system was put in place, but I do believe that some of the positions need to be re, reclassified.
If the county would agree, is, is just a suggestion, we can talk about this all, all night.
Correct.
Do grant a three percent across-the-board raise for each employee. With the, let, let, let's get together, mayor, administration with, and, and look at it. Some sort of reclassification for the lower earning, lower salaried employees.
I mean, with the cost of living, why does not do the focus hand?
That's y'all's call, I, I think I sent y'all emails with all of the cost, the annual cost of each percentage, that's, those are the only ones that. Were provided by finance, we can provide additional numbers going forward, and we can also look at the reclassification and see how that will impact the bottom line, but. You know, uh, the information you have is, 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 is all we have at this point in time on this issue.
So, we had to, we, anybody that got the, uh, two percent for five years, anybody got that percentage yet?
Every year.
I mean, did you, I mean, from every department, for five years, did you, you got it, I mean, you know.
I don't have a list.
I'm giving a list each year at the beginning of the year, and it's highlighted for the five people, for whoever it is. For the five-year increments, um, for the raise, and I automatically give it to that person. At the time of their. Is it someone who said they didn't get it?
No, I'm just asking a question, I don't, I don't know. I don't know who been five years.
Personally, they call, or they let me know at this time to make sure I don't forget it, but as long as it falls within that pay period. If it doesn't fall within that pay period, then they know they're gonna get it on the following period.
Yes, ma'am, they, they don't get it at the end of the year, they get it once they're anniversary. Well, uh, I, I'm against the four percent based on, I, I agree with Mr. Hubbard, if we continue, we gave three percent last year. We give four percent this year, you know, you gotta look at for the years coming, or going forward, because. You still have to make up for that money that you.
Well, if we would stop giving out the end of the year, us, um, increase and just give our pledge and certificate. We can use that money for getting a higher increase for a raise.
Not necessarily, if you wanna put that, I mean, you can start doing a whole lot of things, Ms. Jordan, but, you know.
I'm just looking for more money for our workers, you know, for everybody across the board.
So, two percent, three percent.
Looking at more money, then it's like you, cause we were starting off at four percent.
That's ten people out of a total, what, seventy?
What for the, for the five-year?
No, the, the, the end of the year, you recognize.
How many workers in the city have?
Roughly sixty or seventy, right?
That's a small.
It's not a significant portion, so it doesn't really, it won't have an impact on giving across the board raise. Not at all, almost, you know, um, you're talking about ten people versus seventy, so. You know, little over ten percent of the workforce.
I just believe some people long overdue.
Like I said, I, 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 I am, I am emphatically.
Anyone, not despite the people in the administration, not despite any of them, but the lower salary paying.
I, I emphatically support reclassifying some positions, okay, however. It, it, well, it's not my fault, is what I'm saying, I mean, you know, look, look, I, I, and I, I mean, hey, trust me. There are a lot of variables that go into considerate, considering pay increases and reclassification, right? We can't give everybody a reclassified position. However, I do find that some of the positions are somewhat lower. For this point in time in history, so.
Okay, so you're saying that the four percent would be out of question, really?
Me? No, hey, look, hey, I'm an employee, so, hey, man, make it ten percent, why don't you? That, no, what I'm saying is, is that, um, that, 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 I think you need to separate two issues. Because you cannot really create a system. That is going to allow you to raise people from the lower positions without creating hybrid issues that you may not have considered. So, my recommendation once again would be to come up with an across-the-board figure that you can live with. And then you revisit reclassification, now, you can possibly make the reclassification retroactive if you like. Which will still give them the higher pay, once you determine what it's gonna be. But it's only gonna affect those particular people, whether it be seven, whether it be ten, whether it be twelve, it's not gonna be across the board for every employee. And you just reclassify a position, which is gonna change that position in perpetuity. But it's not gonna affect everybody, that's the only way to do it, I think, without creating legal issues or accounting issues. Because trying to figure out numbers that put somebody over here and somebody over there is gonna be very different. Because of the way your pre-arranged steps have already been, uh, determined.
And when you say a fixed number, you're talking percentages or actual whole number, like a.
If, 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 if I remember correctly, Mr. Alvarez suggested that instead of doing two percent, three percent, four percent. You come up and say, well, I want everybody to two thousand dollars, and that represents a percentage for everybody, based on what their total salary is. You can do it that way, but that way does create some inequities. As opposed to just saying, hey, we're gonna give everybody two percent, then everybody gets two percent, nobody can say they didn't get their two percent. And then you reclassify certain positions, and then only those positions would be affected by the reclassification. And it's not an issue with someone who's not in that position. So, it doesn't create a situation where someone complains and say, oh, hey, I was treated unfairly, I'm going soon, can't say that. We reclassify positions, not people, as opposed to across-the-board raises applies to positions and people. So, I would, I would break these two things up, give the raise, reclassify, and then everybody should have accomplished what you're trying to accomplish. Without creating nightmare scenarios.
And council members, I, I discussed this with, uh, Councilwoman Gordon earlier, uh, but while we're still in the state. Uh, we have, we, we have put on the record that Ms. Gordon will not be participating in this move because her. She does have a, a child who is an employee of the city, so we just wanna make sure we're not running afoul of any ethics provisions there. And I have, I've already spoken with Ms. Gordon, so she is aware of that, so.
She can't go, but she can negotiate.
Yeah, she could participate in the negotiation, but under revised statute forty-two, one, one, two, zero, she has to recuse herself from voting on the issue. So, we, we just wanted to make the other council members and, and the audience aware of that, just so everybody understands.
Just wanna say this, it's been a really a rough two years, like with the COVID. And some people really capitalized during that period, versus other people really did, and they had to continue to work. And continue to make whatever money that they were making to take care of their family, they didn't go off and cop out to unemployment. And, yeah, yeah, PPP and A B C and, you know, E V Ts and all that, you know, some people are still actually working. I'm talking about these, w- w- women and men actually still working. And even in administration, I think, some of those are still working. I feel that we should give them a substantial amount of money to live off of. To be able to take care of their family, for the work that they do, you know. I would hate for people to be juggling my percentage on my job, from, from, for the work I do, but, hey. It's about time.
I'll say this, the reason I appreciate that, like I said earlier, I'm prepared to do three percent, you know. And I, I agree, everybody works hard, but I, I can say that I can speak for myself, what I've done my whole life. My kids have always told me, Dad, you never had just one job, I always had two or three jobs, most of the time, three jobs, not three full-time jobs. I got out and hustled, I did my nine to five, then went referee basketball, did that five, six days a week, just to make that extra. Nothing special, I'm not looking for a pat on the back, but I, you know, I don't, you know, I appreciate our employees, but, uh. So I said, I'm prepared to give three percent, I referee basketball games, I'd get up in the middle of the night when it's freezing cold. Tie ships up at the port, to let ships, I, I just hustled, I knew all those little hustles out there. I loaded groceries on, uh, ships out in the middle of the Gulf of Mexico in eight-foot waves. I didn't have to do that, I could've been content with my nine to five, but I did all. I didn't have to do that, I could've been content with my nine-to-five, but I did all that. Cause I, 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 I wanted more. I've always, I've always believed this, you work your forty-hour a week to pay your bills. If you wanna hustle for some more, you get out and hustle, and that's, that's how I've always lived my life, and I'm not patting myself on the back again.
Is this raise include the city inspector? He gets the two, right, ma'am?
Yeah.
Across the board, is anybody?
You know what I'm saying? He gets the two. Two percent, was he awarded two percent? Didn't that recognition?
I don't see why my mom would go run all the jobs inside of that lake overnight and come home and take care of her. I don't see what she could put another one in, to be honest.
No, there's.
Look, I thought, I was about to say, I'm screaming, actually, gotta vote.
Okay.
He's made a motion.
Who made a motion for three percent?
Okay, I'll say that.
If, if we did say no, they just killed it, uh.
Is there a substitute motion?
Yeah, there's a substitute. Yeah, substitute, but even if that, uh, even if that substitute was, uh.
For four percent?
Yeah, if, if we did substitute for it was no, then we just back at point they're not giving raises.
So if the substitute motion fails, we're back to the primary.
Okay.
Is it a two percent?
Which is three, no, the motion was.
Okay, I got you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for three percent. You got a motion and a second.
One second before we vote here. That's got a financial question.
Man, if it's a, a substitute motion for four percent.
Yes.
And if it's, and if, and if the three don't pass, and then the four don't pass, so.
Okay, if the four doesn't pass.
The mayor had to break the tie, right?
Sure, we're breaking the three. If our four don't pass, and somebody says, we're making four, we go back to three, if it don't pass, so something's still ahead. And that's all.
I was trying to see if I could just imagine something else on the screen. What's your screen saying? Okay, so we can try to load on the screen. I tried something, it's no difference, we're gonna see if we can load on that. Oh, the mayor keeps doing. Okay, he just wanna do it on this, I mean, it's a waste, it's a waste, it's all gone.
All right, and, and just for the record, that was for a, of a budgetary question, um, just in case we're in a time of rejection to figure, uh, issue to figure out if the mayor can vote.
So, Candy.
Uh, we believe this mayor will be able to vote because this is not gonna require an actual, uh, budget amendment.
You believe?
Yeah, no.
It's not gonna require a budget amendment?
It wouldn't require, the mayor can't vote on an ordinance, but this should not require a budget ordinance.
So no issue.
It should ordinance.
Well.
That's only in time.
Four hundred and fifty, we get it off, it's less, I know it's last year, it's in the hundreds.
But it, 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 it's only if it's required, though. So as long as the general fund isn't gonna be, we're gonna be out of the budget of the general fund by more than five percent, a budget ordinance would not be needed.
Okay.
Would be required.
And that's not the case.
All right, so mayor, we got, we have one motion for, for three percent. Made by Mr. Revere, second by Mr. Hudson. Are you trying to make a substitute motion?
For four.
Now we, we have a substitute motion by Mr. Brown.
Excuse me, Teresa, could you come in, come on, please, love? How, how long will it take to do the reclassification? About how long would that take, like, out there, out?
It, it depends on how extensive the reclassification you wanna do. It could take a day. If you wanna just say, oh, one oh seven's become one oh ten at one day, because the one nine, oh, nine, it's real simple. Because of the stepping rate system we have, you just take a job and say, it's no longer one oh seven, it's a one ten. And then everybody moves up to that level. But if you, if you're sibling, it involves some effort, but that's, that's what reclassification means. It means that we have a chart that says Labor one starts at one oh seven day. All you do is reclassify to one oh nine day, or one ten day, whatever, you just pick a number. And we can tell you what every number, what's every salary is from A to Z.
Right, you just, then, but then you got Labor one, then you got Labor two.
Labor two, so you have a Labor, right, now that's the other side of the equation. You're gonna reclassify and you're gonna group, group, and all Labor is gonna change. Because you can't have Labor one making more than Labor two, based on it, but it, it, the time factor's with it too, right, so that you.
Y'all don't have to recreate the wheel, though.
No, 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 the chart gives us every classification from A to Z, so it's, it's not, it won't take long at all. The question is how many people's gonna be affected, how many positions you wanna change. That's what's gonna be the time of the time frame.
And I'm, I'm, I'm looking a little further, actually, I don't think this is the issue that the mayor can break the tie on. The reason is that this is, we do have five council members present, even though one is abstaining. We still have five council members present, and the mayor can only break a tie if there's an equal division of members present and voting, which would not be the case. So the mayor, I don't think, the mayor will not be able to vote on this one. He won't be able to break the tie.
So what would happen at that moment, we just have a tie, if that, if that was to?
So you have made a substitute motion, you will need a second to that motion. If you get a second, that motion will then go for a vote. You will need three votes for your motion to pass. If you do not get three votes, your motion will fail, and we will be back to the primary motion.
All right, which is three.
Which is Mr. Revere's motion for a three percent raise.
All right.
And if that don't pass.
If that doesn't pass. If that doesn't pass, then there, there's, nothing has passed.
And then, I, I mean.
Shawna, we might as well go to three percent, cause we.
For, for our employees, we, I think we owe it to, to do that reclassification. I mean, I don't know what one oh seven, like Shawna said, I don't, I, I know one oh seven, C to one oh seven D is a two percent rate. We all.
The other is.
You know, the lower end of our pay scale. What's the number, what number is this?
When the steps start at one oh one, and the rate from A to Z.
And I don't know what one oh one makes, I don't know what that is.
Somebody on payroll for one oh one?
There's probably something that's been in place for a long time, but one oh one should just be fade. I'm just talking off the top.
I'm sure it's low, it's low.
It's maybe for part-time.
No, we got, we're, 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 we're looking at one oh one.
Basically, if you want a reference point, you can look at a previous item that's a part-time worker who's being considered through the job program. And that hourly rate is probably what a new employee at one oh seven, I think, might make.
But, but it's twenty-eight.
His was an exception because the goal had a limit that they can.
It, but it's, it's a ballpark figure, all right?
No, it's definitely.
Well, yeah, but is it substantially less?
No.
No, it's not, that's what I'm saying. So it, it, it gives you an idea that a, a new employee equally, uh, qualified for that position, which is Labor, Labor one, will be somewhere close to that.
That's about it. Nineteen.
So, you back at the substitute motion?
Mr.
Do you have a second?
Yes, I'm just withdrawing, I'm just withdrawing and we're sticking with three percent.
So, Mr. Brown has withdrawn his substitute motion, so we're back to.
I mean, we can just go through the motions, you just wanna go through the motion. I mean, if y'all just wanted to go through the motion, you could go through the motion, but it's not gonna pass.
Mr. Brown has withdrawn his motion, so we're now back to the primary motion for a three percent across-the-board raise.
It was moved by Mr. Revere, second by Mr. Hudson, mayor.
Okay, I got a motion for three percent.
Ms. Gordon, just, uh, Ms. Gordon will be abstaining.
No.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, three percent, uh, across-the-board rate increase. Uh, motion by Mr. Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Hubble, any objections? Here or not?
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Gordon's abstaining. Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
All right, agenda number fourteen, consider adoption of the West Baton Rouge Harvest Mitigation Plan, as presented by the West Baton Rouge Parish Homeland Security.
You should, you also received an email with the Harvest Mitigation Plan. This is really just a formality. The, the West Baton Rouge Parish Homeland Security created the plan and implemented the plan. They just want all of the municipalities to, uh, adopt it and lead it. You've done this several times, five years ago, I think was the last time. And you should've gotten practice of those minutes too from that adoption, so bruise the plan at your leisure, but, uh, I'm just asking that you adopt the plan as much as.
Two pages.
Exactly. Right, just. Read that will.
Yeah, thank you.
I got a motion by Councilman Reed, second by Councilman Lacy, any objections? Here or not?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Agenda number sixteen, public hearing for purpose of adopting an amendment to the City of Port Allen, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year budget in the Rose and Drainage Department.
No, fifteen.
No, fifteen.
It's a pass, okay. Agenda nineteen fifteen, consider approving the cooperative endeavor between the City of Port Allen and West Baton Rouge Parish School Board to provide funding for the Port Allen High School baseball team up to four hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-four cents.
Yeah, yeah, the council member status for the approval that you granted several months ago. This is simply just the agreement that will document, and there is a paper trail of the, uh, of the cooperative endeavor.
I'll move. Say.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Brown, any objections? Here or not?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy? Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Now, agenda number sixteen, public hearing for the purpose of adopting an amendment to the City of Port Allen, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year budget in the Rose and Drainage Department to cover costs for the purchase or replacement of the, of a vehicle damaged by fire. Okay, open a public hearing, anybody from the public wishes to be heard on this item, agenda. Nobody wishes to be heard, we're gonna close the public hearing. Agenda nineteen seventeen, consider adopting an amendment to the City of Port Allen, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year budget in the Rose and Drainage Department to cover the cost, purchase and the replacement of a vehicle damaged by fire.
Okay, so Rose and Drainage had a vehicle that they lost in the engine fire. They was being operated as usual, parked outside the road, they, they saw smoke, called the fire department. It just caught on fire. The fire department said it is overheated, they, they investigated. Insurance company paid out roughly fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars. You have a new vehicle that's sitting there waiting for us in the thirty-three thousand dollar range. So we need additional funds to add to the insurance payment to acquire the vehicle, register the vehicle, and add it to our insurance policy, so.
One thing, has, I mean, something was going on with the truck before?
No, no.
Did the accounting issues just?
There was no prior warning or indication.
Bam, called the fire.
That's how it was reported to us. I went, I went to the scene, uh, I think the mayor was out of town at the time.
Had it been serviced, had, had, had it been serviced, the, any of that?
I mean, there, there was no indication that there was any negligence that caused the fire. Vehicles catch fire all the time, Ms. Lacy, just, just happened, yes. Absolutely, trust me. And it just so happened that it was out of time.
Okay.
But it was a twenty, it was two thousand and six too, now, it wasn't a new vehicle. It was, it was due to be replaced. It, it had already serviced the wastewater treatment plant that had been re, uh, assigned to Rose and Drainage, so it wasn't a new vehicle that came out.
I mean, that's why I just wanted to have the service been kept up on, you know, you know.
Yes, there was no indication of any cause, any cause that was, could be, uh, assigned to an individual.
Would y'all have been putting it in the shop and all that?
Part of it.
Did y'all take it to the shop before, or did you just, oh?
What do you mean by take it to the shop?
I mean, to be repaired, had it been in the damage before that?
Well, I, I did review the entire history of the vehicle, but, uh, most of our routine maintenance is done in-house. The only contract outwork that our in-house mechanic shop can't perform, so, um, like I said, it was a two thousand and six, it caught on fire in twenty-twenty-one, and had been in service for fifteen years. I think that, um, fire kind of doesn't fit this fate, we got fifteen thousand dollars for it.
So we have been in the budget for?
Part of it for twenty-five thousand or so, to make up the difference and, and then get us a new truck.
I'll move.
Okay. Wait, I got to read it first. Ordinance number one of twenty-twenty-two.
We just need to know.
Hey, I aim it, please.
All right.
Ordinance number one of twenty-twenty-two, an ordinance of the City of Port Allen, State of Louisiana, providing for an amendment to the budget of the City of Port Allen's Roads and Drains Fund for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-one, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, and to provide for related matters. We move?
I'll move, I'll motion.
I got a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Revere, any objections? Here or not?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Agenda eighteen, introduce draft orders to facilitate the cooperative endeavor for building permits and inspections for the West Baton Rouge Parish Council, Mr. Hubble.
As you recall, last month or month before, you all could save two alternatives. Uh, contracts or cooperative endeavor agreements for building inspections and permits. Uh, after reviewing the cooperative endeavor agreement and looking at implementation, it's gonna require us to amend several ordinances and actually create one new category of building permits that we do not currently issue. Therefore, the, the parish can, um, charge fees that would be created by these ordinances that mirror the parish's current fees, so it won't require any technological, what, uh, upgrades of software upgrades to calculate the, the cost of a particular job. We're gonna copy the parish's fee schedule verbatim, make it our own, yeah. So that when you go to the parish office, they can charge a fee that is already com- computed by this system. So, uh, it's what, it may be three ordinances or four.
Yeah, I think, I think it's four ordinances, and, and basically what they're gonna be doing is amending appendix C of our code of ordinances. And that there should be, uh, some ordinances in draft form floating around, uh, but essentially you have several sections in appendix C where it sets your permits fee, permitting fees for building inspections, permitting fees for electrical inspections, plumbing inspections, uh, moving of buildings. And the parish actually does permitting fees for mechanical inspections, which Port Allen has never done. So basically, what we're doing is we are amending several sections of appendix C to basically match the fee schedule charged by the parish. So in some, in, in, in a lot of situations, uh, the permitting fees will be charging a higher permitting fee than what we have been charging because in a lot of situations, the parish have charged, uh, a higher amount. There was a few, uh, situations where we saw where, uh, the parish was actually charging a lower amount than us. But, but primarily, you know, the, the fees will be increasing to bring us up to the, to the parish level. So do you, if you, there, again, there should be some copies floating around, and, and of course those.
Copy next month where you hold on.
Yeah, but those will come up for final approval next month. We'll, we'll have the public hearing, and then you'll be asked to, to officially adopt them.
This is only for introduction.
This is only introduction.
I move. I got a motion by Councilman Revere?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordon, any objections? Here and now?
Mr. Brown?
No.
No?
Because when I know, my my stance hasn't changed with this situation.
Miss Garland?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Miss Lacy?
No.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Agenda nineteen, authorize mayor to engage in independent contract to cover chief administration's office duties on a temporary basis. Council, I I've been given notice that uh, uh, CFO officer, Mr. Kane, will be out until uh April of the fourth. And uh, uh, right now, uh, because everything that's going on in the the upcoming budgets that we have to produce. Uh, we would have to uh contract someone out with experience to to handle the workload of uh Washington's uh, they gave that office.
Do you have something in mind?
No, we don't, not this particular time, I don't have any ideas.
I was meant to assist in CFO position, look like it would need it, right?
Yes.
I I move, I'm gonna.
That's it. Yeah, I mean. Miss Lacy?
Okay, I got a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Lacy. Alright, any objections, John? Yes?
Miss Miss Garland?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Miss Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Re- Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Agenda, agenda twenty, condemnation proceedings?
None at this time, mayor.
Thank you. Agenda twenty one, alcoholic beverage permits?
So we have five pending renewals of alcohol and liquor licenses, uh, you typically do these in Globo, but because of. Some uh documentation, a documentation error. I want to separate. The bottom four, so we can, we can, we would, I would entertain a motion for Port Island Seafood Class A Liquor. Paul Medica doing business as Kuyan's Cage and Barbecue Class A Liquor. Sasco Sasco LLC doing business as Chevron Food Mart Class B Liquor. And Bros Food Food Mart Class B Liquor, you can do those in Globo, I would ask for a separate motion on Phoebe One Incorporated doing business as Allen Food Mart. Class B Liquor, subject to. A correction of some documentation.
So we need a motion on the bottom four, Port Island Seafood, Paul Medica, Sasco, and Bros Food Mart.
And then a separate motion on the on Allen, and he will explain.
Allen has renewed year after year, but apparently there was some documentation that went out that was inaccurate, so. I want them to correct that before we actually grant the license.
So for the bottom four, do we have a motion?
You can approve it, subject to.
Yeah.
The correction, that uh we will converse with them to engage.
Okay, okay, we, for the bottom four, we have a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Revere. Mayor?
Okay, I got a motion for Port Island Seafood, Kuyan's, Chevron Food, and Bros Brothers, motion by. Councilman Brown, second by. Councilman Revere, any objections? Here and now?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Miss Garland?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Miss Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, that is in Globo.
Right. Actually, of course, we're playing.
A second motion to.
You want to explain the fee?
Well. It was a fee error, okay, so, um. Ordinarily, these licenses have a fee assigned to them, apparently they got some documentation. That didn't match the fee that they paid for the renewal for twenty twenty one, this is for twenty twenty two, they paid what they were asked to pay, but it turns out that it's probably not the correct fee, so.
So this is a motion pending the correct fee?
Pendant correction of the application and payment of the principal fee.
Is it more or less?
It's more.
I move, second. I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Brown, any objection? Here and now?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Miss Garland?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Miss Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Agenda twenty two, announcements and call assignments.
I understood that um Terry had been bit by a dog while working. Uh, is he still out?
Yes.
Okay, so we have someone in his place, do we um give him an increase, uh, whoever took his place, or do they go, they just keep him on salary?
They just keep his salary, but we we uh, we have a young man that just got hired in Rose and Drainage, and he used to work in in New Rose. And he's been training with, uh, in fact, this is the second. Tier with the uh meter readers, and uh, he's temporarily assigned to that position until. Terry come back, and he's scheduled to come back somewhere at twenty fourth of this month, well, he's gotta go back and get released from his job.
I was just asking, we, you know, getting a little increase for working extra on their job this month.
That's something that we can consider, council, you know, for these individuals who step in, if they make a substitute.
See, that's what I'm talking about, someone like him, usually right, only be extra.
Will have to be bothered before the committee, uh, if it's in, yeah, he can just, whatever that position is, that's the salary he gets for going on base.
But he's temporary anyway, since he's doing.
If it's less, if it's more, then he's probably making, yeah, he.
Yeah, but like, not permanent, just temporary, while he's doing the job. I don't, I don't know who it is, or, you know, I never saw him, but I knew Terry got bit by a dog, I knew somebody had to be out there. Captain Adrian out there working. Look, do anybody know how he's doing, he's recovering well?
I think he's going to the hospital.
I ain't know it was bit me.
He he's back at home, he's recovering, yeah. Alright, um, announcements, uh, I have two. And uh, one is, uh, everybody knows President's Day is February twenty first. President's Day, and again, we might uh consider moving, uh, celebrating President's Day today, and Monday before my class, so they have a long weekend. So, uh, I will be ready this before y'all, the council, to uh have them both have a a long weekend for my class, which is a particular day. Uh, and secondly, uh, remind you that uh, January the seventeenth is Martin Luther King holiday, we'll be off next Monday. Have a good, not come off of the king.
If I'm not mistaken, I think they're gonna be having church at Papa's Road this year. Yeah.
They didn't have it actually.
Right, I think they're gonna have it this year. And so I text everyone, those of you can be who have to make it.
Alright, anybody have anything?
I have a question, I do, I mean, since we're talking about ratings and all that, how we get a raise?
You got to vote for it, I want it.
The thing with the council is that we can vote on a rate that you.
Can't get to next year?
We have to know we're gonna be here.
Ms. Rose, um, did you come up with an idea for uh Black History for next month?
I did, but mayor told me I didn't have enough time to work on it, so.
For Black History?
For Black History, you got a whole run. You got twenty eight days in February.
We could come up with something, we're we're going to the community.
Huh? No, we're going for Black History Month.
So she has.
So it's time, I had it on the agenda to talk about Black History Month.
But we we, maybe we are here together and and uh come up with something.
Get off the agenda, he said I didn't have enough time, but he he went with a miscommunication, I suppose.
I said we got twenty eight days, and it don't have to be, Black History means every month.
Alright.
Everybody said she was hyped about the ratings, Rose, so maybe to, to their Christmas, maybe maybe that.
But next year, maybe this year?